School Board meeting this afternoon, this evening, we'll be having a combined work session and our regular meeting at this meeting. So we will if you bow your heads please. Well gracious to God, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for this opportunity, the Lord, to make decisions that affect our children, the Lord, in our community. Oh heaven Father, we ask you allow us to make the best decision that we know how and that you remove any selfish reasons for any decisions that we make. And oh heaven Father, as we approach this holiday season, we ask you to protect our children, our students, the Lord, and our community, the Lord, that they may have a safe holiday, the Lord. Oh heaven Father, all these things we ask in prayer in our Son Jesus' name, amen. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance is that the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Matthews, I see we have some special recognition?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Looking at the agenda tonight, I do not see where the Newton County Education Foundation's listed, but I believe it's in this, it is in the materials that I have before me. Thank you, Sharon. I appreciate that. You had to be good. Bob, you're safe. For our last regularly monthly meeting of the calendar year, we have some very special recognition certificates to present this evening. We have several employees.
We have several employees, departments and schools, who have received regional and statewide honors lately, and many of them are here this evening, so we hope we get this right. First, I'd like to ask Dr. Tina Daniel Reesey from Eastside High School and Mr. Jeff Metters, District One Board of Education representative, to come forward. Let's give them a round of applause as they do. Dr. Daniel Reesey was recently recognized at the November 2011 Georgia School Counselors' Association Conference in Macon as the Region Four Secondary School Counselor of the Year. This is the second time she has won this prestigious award. Candidates must support the career, personal, social, and academic development of students. They must also demonstrate leadership, advocacy, collaboration in their work while promoting equity and access to opportunities for rigorous educational experiences for all students. At the very same conference, Mr. Metters was named the Georgia School Counselor Association's Region Four Advocate of the Year. Nominees must provide exemplary support of counseling services, outstanding promotion of counseling and guidance services, implementation of new or additional guidance and counseling services, and improvement of existing guidance and counseling services. Nominees for the Advocate Awards cannot be employed as a school counselor or supervisor of school counselors or guidance at the school, district, or state levels. In addition to Newton County, the region's comprising Region Four include Franklin, Jackson, Madison, Albert, Clark, O'Conne, Oglethorpe, Wilkes, Lincoln, Barrow, Rockdale, Walton, Morgan, Green, Talleferro, and Hart. Congratulations to each of you and thank you for all that you do for the Newton County school system. Next, if you had the time to read our press announcements today, you know that our school system was just awarded eight state awards from the Georgia School Public Relations Association. Ms. Sherry Davis Vineyard, our PR director, accepted those awards yesterday at the association's annual conference in Atlanta. These awards were for publications promoting our Newton College and Career Academy. In all, the district received five Gold Achievement Awards and three Best in Category Awards. The Newton County School System Pathway Offerings brochure earned a Gold Award for Excellence in the Special Purpose Publication category with a score of 95, and the Career Academy Public Service Announcement won a Gold Award of Excellence in the Electronic Media category with a score of 95 as well. The Career Academy Program Cards Packet and the Career Academy Logo also were in Gold Awards for Excellence, each with a perfect score of 100 in the Special Purpose Publication category and Image Identity Package category respectively. The entire collection of marketing materials for the Career Academy recruitment campaign earned a Gold Award of Excellence in the Marketing Campaign category with a perfect score of 100. The NCCA logo earned a Best in Category in the Image Identity Package. The Career Academy PSA tied with two other school systems for the Best in Category in Electronic Media, and the entire packet of Career, of the Career Academy materials earned Best in Category for Marketing Campaigns. This was a team effort, and that effort definitely paid off for our school system. I'd like to ask those who worked on the publications to come forward at this time. They include from our district, Ms. Davis Vineyard, our PR director, Mr. James Woodard, NCCA principal, and Ms. Cynthia Marvell, Youth Apprenticeship Director, and from the Graphic Design Company, Current Events Productions, Mr. Chris Haylor and Mrs. Terry Haylor. Will you come forward, please? Let's give them a round of applause. It's also important to note, it's also important to note that three former Newton High School students, Viviana Vega, Brandy Clark, and Angelica Irvin designed the logo for the Career Academy. They have since graduated but were recognized at the time their logo was selected for the academy. Congratulations to each of you. Thank you very much. In addition to individual employees, we also have two schools we'd like to recognize this evening. First, I'd like to ask the administrators from Indian Creek Middle School to come forward. They include Dr. Renee Mallard, principal, and assistant principals, Dr. Darrell Stevens and Mr. James Minigusso. At the recent Georgia Association of Secondary School Principals Fall Conference, Indian Creek Middle was recognized as a 2011 breakout school and later a distinguished breakout school for 2011. These are the highest honors a middle school can earn through the Georgia Association of Secondary School Principals. With these awards, Indian Creek Middle was one of just 12 schools identified this year by the Georgia Association of Secondary School Principals as one of the best middle schools in the state of Georgia. As a result of being named a distinguished breakout school, Indian Creek received a $500 cash award. This is a tremendous honor for Indian Creek and for the Newton County school system, and we congratulate you for a job well done. Thank you. This all feels like Christmas tonight. That's a wonderful thing. Very timely indeed. Tonight, we'd also like to recognize Heard-Mixon Elementary School. I'd like to ask Principal Lee Peck and Assistant Principal Marquita Wilkins to come forward, and as they do, let's give them a round of applause. If you read, if you read still another press release issued from our PR office today, you know that Heard-Mixon Elementary has been named one of only 26 schools in the state of Georgia as a School of Excellence in Student Achievement as named by the Georgia Department of Education and State School Superintendent, Dr. John Barge. Heard-Mixon was named a School of Excellence for being one of the 13 schools in our state showing the greatest gains in student achievement based on the congressional districts, and we're in Congressional District Eight. We are, I just said that, we are in the eighth congressional district. In order to be named one of the schools with the greatest gains per congressional district, schools regardless of demographics must demonstrate greatest continuous gains in student achievement for the past three years as measured by assessments in reading and in mathematics. In addition, Schools of Excellence must also meet the following criteria to be considered. First, meet adequate yearly progress for a minimum of three straight years. Secondly, meet or exceed state average scores in Science and Social Studies. Thirdly, not be considered a persistently dangerous school under the unsafe school choice option of No Child Left Behind. That's a good thing, Lee. Keep it that way. Be, be in existence for at least five years and not be under any type of state investigation within the last year. For being named a School of Excellence, Heard-Mixon Elementary will receive a monetary award of $1,000. Congratulations to Heard-Mixon Elementary. Now, for our next presentation, I'd like to call on Mr. Bob Stansfield, who has recognitions he'd like to present to several employees on behalf of the Newton Education Foundation. Bob?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Matthews, I'm Bob Stansfield. I'm here on behalf of the Newton Education Foundation. I'm pleased to be accompanied tonight by a few of my fellow board members. Vicki Hutchinson, Vicki, if you would stand. Flemmy Pitts, Shannon Davis, and I think that's all I saw. If I missed anyone, forgive me. I'm pleased to be here today to award our fall grants for classroom instruction. This is our second cycle of classroom grants which the foundation has funded. We have three recipients. I'm going to call them forward. If they are present, please come up, and I will give you your package. It has some information on your grant, and I, as I call you forward, will give the briefest summary of your grant. Rebecca Bennett, which is a grant recipient for Read for Life Fairview Elementary School for $2,000.
Wow.
Terry Battisher, Weather Station Cousins Middle School, $1,985. And finally Catherine Bonnell and Denise Walker, Just Reed Clements Middle School, $1,997. The funding of these grants allows the foundation to continue to support education in Newton County. We will be announcing again when we come back from the Christmas holidays, another grant cycle for the spring. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stansfield. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the last recognition this evening involves you. As you very well know, the state of Georgia in recent legislation has mandated that you receive up to nine hours of training as a board member of a public school system in the state of Georgia. This board is in process of doing that, has, I think substantially completed all of that at this time, and so we were asked to recognize you from the Griffin Risa folks who provided that training. So without further ado, I think just remaining at your seats, given the certificates. They completed a Module One. I don't have the topics per se in front of me. I can tell you that they involved policymaking, school finance, strategic planning, school superintendent relationships, personnel issues, that kind of training as you might would surmise for a board of education. And completing successfully Module One at Griffin Risa are the following board members. Ms. Shaquilla Henderson Baker, Ms. Abigail Coggan, Mr. Eddie Johnson, Mr. Jeff Metters, Chairman Alman Turner. Completing a four-hour module, that was a three-hour module, completing a four-hour module, so-called Module Two, in the various topics that I alluded to, were the following board members. Shaquilla Henderson Baker, Abigail Coggan, Mr. Eddie Johnson, Mr. Jeff Metters, Chairman Alman Turner. And completing Module Three, another three-hour set of trainings, were the following board members. Ms. Coggan, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Metters, Chairman Turner. Let's give them a round of applause. That concludes our recognitions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. I need approval for the agenda, please.
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Metters, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker, all in favor of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. I need approval of the minutes, please.
Still moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, all in favor of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Superintendent's report, first item presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here tonight are representatives from the Newton County, Covington, Covington, Newton County Chamber of Commerce. Hunter Hall is here as their executive director. Shannon Davis is here, and Mr. Harrison's in the audience, but without further ado, I'm going to give it over to Hunter Hall. Hunter?
Dr. Matthews, Board of Education, thank you for having the chamber here tonight. I need to let you know, if Ms. Vineyard hadn't left, I'd love a picture because my mom will cry the fact that I am presenting to the Board of Education instead of being disciplined by the Board of Education. This would be a significant day in my life. Twenty-year PTO mother, and teachers would request that I did not get their class. And so anyway, there's quite a long story, but I'm glad I'm here and we're grateful to be partners with the school board. Let me quickly explain why we would be so tacky as to wear T-shirts before such a classy audience as yourself. Once a week, we, a chamber member, brings us shirts and we do what's called Tagged on Tuesday. We take a picture. This morning, we were at Boleritos, and we were flipping chicken and preparing for a day of cooking and eating, and anyway, we posted on Facebook and they run specials, and we did it with United Bank last week, and we've got Amsoil coming up, and, and we want to make sure to get Current Events, who's a chamber member, we're going to get them too. So anyway, but we wear their shirts all day, and we promote them, and so a plug for Boleritos. We are here tonight to talk to you about the Targeted Industry Study. Very quickly, tell me, give me a timeframe for this presentation.
Twenty minutes, max. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I hope you.
Twenty minutes?
All right. I saw Mr. Metters just roll his eyes when you said twenty minutes.
I did not.
The poker play. But anyway, the, the purpose of the Targeted Industry Study that the chamber did jointly with the Board of Commissioners, the City of Covington, and the Industrial Development Authority, the sole purpose of this is, as you might or might not know, just, just about a year ago, the chamber hired Roger Harrison as our Senior Vice President of Economic Development. His job and responsibilities is to solely recruit industry that creates jobs and increases our tax digest. In so doing, there was a need to identify what are our targets. Are we going to shoot with a shotgun? Are we going to shoot with a rifle? We very much could not waste time nor resources to shoot with a shotgun. And so the Targeted Industry Study basically is a study that a consultant came in, sat down with a huge group of stakeholders, and did a survey basically of our assets and our liabilities. Those things are just as important to understand our weaknesses as it is our strengths. They looked at our workforce, they looked at education, they looked at our existing industry, they looked at quality of place, quality of life components, they looked at labor force, the whole gamut, and came back with recommendations. It basically said this, Newton County, you are best suited to recruit these areas of industry. And so what we want to do tonight is give you an overview of that study. This is very high level. We can bore down into exhaustive detail. We'll be happy to do that with you one-on-one, or we can come back if you so desire. We're going to stay high level, open up for Q and A as you see fit. I want to make sure you understand, this is warts and all, okay? And as we say at the chamber, reality is our friend and hope is not a strategy. And so from that standpoint, when we look at this stuff tonight, reality is our friend because it lets us know where to start, and we're not going to build a strategy based on hope, we're going to build it on facts, and no one knows that better than you guys because Dr. Matthews is such a data-driven individual, and so you will understand this quite well. So let's dive in. We're going to look at assets and challenge assessment. We're going to look at, the subgroup that we're going to focus on first is labor. The codes on the right, the color codes, the yellow is neutral, the down arrow is obviously negative, and the green arrow up is a positive. I want to highlight just a couple, and I'm trying to highlight things that would be relative to your interest. The second issue there is the availability of skilled industrial workers as a negative. One of the things that came out of this assessment is they talked to existing industry people, HR directors, was there is a real lack of availability in our skilled industrial worker. Now, that is a broad term. What does that mean? It, it means a whole lot of things. It might mean electrical issues, it might mean general mechanical contractors, it might mean people who have computer technical skills, CAD drawing, drafting skills such as, and such, as it pertains to industrial manufacturing. So that's a, a real concern for us. The availability of technicians and scientists, when they looked at the existing industry, what's here, what's not here, where are growth potentials, the lack of technicians and scientists was a, a real concern for us. I'm going to come back and explain why these things are of concern, not just for present day, but also our future. Managerial personnel was another concern, a, a real lacking point, and the availability of an engineering program that was noticeable was a concern. Now, we're having, you need to know too, that we are in constant dialogue with James Woodard, with Dr. Matthews through Leadership Collaborative, through Leadership Newton County, with Jeff. I mean, we're in dialogue on all these issues. None of this necessarily surprises us, but it is an outside outsider with a briefcase, you know, code word consultant who's, who's bringing this information and seeing it with objective eyes. So anyway, those are a few of the highlights. One of the things that I do want to notice as a neutral is the availability of post-secondary vocational training. It's neutral in the sense that it's present, but it's not necessarily a, a positive. It's not viewed as an asset yet. We feel like that's one of the things that we can make a quick move on and are having a lot of dialogue there, both with Georgia Piedmont Technical, with GPC, with Troy. Those are constant conversations that we're having and, and feel like we're actually making great, great headway in that. So let me move on off of labor into an area of just our local economic development program. Again, I'm highlighting this not necessarily because it's relevant to you, although it will as I come back and bring it full circle. We feel like we've already moved, number one, to a positive in terms of adequate level of professional staff with the hire of Roger, with the refocusing of Shannon in our existing industry and our workforce development. Public, private sector is both highly, highly engaged, and I want you to understand from a leadership collaborative standpoint that you participate in and help lead. That right there is a huge, huge value, and we're making, making good work of it. Level of funding for local economic development program was the only negative as it pertained to our economic development. I don't, I'm not trying to hear to lobby y'all for money. Goodness, not, you know, the old turnip seed's been squeezed, hasn't it? But it's an issue that we are working on and going back, that's why I highlighted the second green arrow of public and private sector, is we're not solely looking for private sec, public sector money, but also trying to partner with our private sector as we do economic development. Move to our next slide, and this is government impacts on business. And I wanted to throw this into this presentation for you because this, this impact in economic development, obviously, is it boils down to the nuts and bolts of tax digest for you and milled rate and, and how those monies are brought into the school system. I want to highlight this one right here. Quality of local elementary and secondary education. I'm not telling y'all anything. We've been in many conversations with y'all as to what the reality of those test scores are. One of the things, and we'll talk about here in a second, is successes that came out of the Principal of the Day program was we went behind the curtain on that. And as Jay James, one of our chamber board members and the owner of Conyers Honda said, hey, we, having been through the Principal of the Day program, I'm here to tell you and tell the world, we are ahead of the curve. You as school superintendent, as board of educators, as principals and teachers, we are ahead of the curve. This might indicate that the quality of local elementary and secondary education is a negative on this assessment, but we have great confidence, and I'm not just saying this to, because I'm in this audience, I'm saying it because I went to, I was the Principal of the Day. I sat through the debriefing with 23 other principals of the day, and we are quite confident, even as the awards were given tonight, that are reflective, that we are ahead of the curve. And so we have great confidence, as I've said many times before, you won't find bigger cheerleaders than your Chamber of Commerce as it pertains to what y'all are doing day in, day out, and what your administration and teachers are doing, because we feel like that's going to happen. But it is a reality. It is a reality as it pertains to economic development. These are questions that we get quite consistently. Let me tell you very candidly how this plays out for you. We know that 49% of our workforce in Newton County, in terms of the people that come to work here, only 49% are residents of Newton County. That means 51% commute in. We know in the very frank conversations that we have with our executives in industry, that one of the reasons, and this is, you got to keep in mind, they didn't move here yesterday. These are executives that have been here for 10, 15 years, running companies located in Newton County. But one of the reasons that they don't live in Newton County was because of the education systems that they felt like they were faced, the, the opportunities that they have. We do not believe that that is going to stay the same. In fact, we're quite confident that it won't, based on all the reasons that I just explained. But when it comes to recruiting industry and relocating businesses to Newton County, these executives do meet and they talk. In fact, we have a prospect that is looking at Newton County right now. One of the things that they requested were two interviews with their HR directors and executives, and they ask these kinds of questions because they're relocating their executives, they're relocating management and, and employees, and these are things that are significant to them. So I say that quite candidly, very frank, it is a concern, but it is one, it is a concern that we feel like, Roger, Shannon, and myself, feel like we are beginning, beginning to get more and more equipped as to how to address those issues and how to speak on your behalf about test scores, about AYP, about Principal of the Day situations that we see, about being able to tell an executive about going into a elementary school war room and having every kid listed on a post-it, on a post, a three-by-five or a three-by-five card, and they have where they are, where they are in their scores, what the next step is, and how we're moving them forward. Those are real-life tangible stories that we tell, that we communicate to help hedge that issue, because we know this is a battleship turn, and we have great confidence you can do it, but it's going to take time. Dr. Matthews has done a great job of what we call expectation management, managing our expectations. These take years to make those turns, but good night. You have two schools represented today that have made state and national recognition. So we think that, that, that battleship's turned faster than, just like a good leader, we believe Dr. Matthews is, is hedged with a long-term bet, but we think it's going to happen faster, and we have confidence in them. So, and, and in the board. So let me move on. Any questions in regards to things that I might have shared in that regard? We'll have time at the end, too. Okay. So as I said at the beginning, the purpose of the Targeted Industry Study was to come back with a, with silver bullets and say, hey, Roger Harrison, Shannon Davis, when you go and recruit companies to Newton County, here are the companies you are most suited to recruit. And here's, here's what the, the conclusion was. Newton County's optimal targets for industry recruitment would be in the area of food processing, specialized creative business services. That might mean call centers, similar to what we have Orkin over here in Lockridge, has, is a call center. They handle all of the outside sales for the United States for Orkin Pest Control. It could also be data centers, the, the likes of Yahoo and Google in terms of backup and storage. Advanced materials and process manufacturing, that is similar to the company that we just, that just announced a location here called Vestar last week. They do metal refractory. They pour with high heat, they pour elements They do metal refractory. They pour, with high heat, they pour elements, they make metals out of elements and compounds. That's an advanced manufacturing process. And then distribution and logistics. Because of our proximity to I-75, I-85, and of course, I-20, distribution logistics is an opportunity for us as well. All right. Here were the recommendations and findings. Basically, hey, here's our strategic plan. Here, when they came and did their evaluation and said, here's what we want you to do. These are recommendations for your next steps. I want to highlight a couple of them because they very intimately relate to our relationship with the school board. First is early college. And truth is, one of the things that we found as we've reviewed this, we've actually, we're actually there. I think they missed some assessment. The recommendation is engage in K-12 with community college and four-year institutions in the area to work with the high, with area high schools so that each school student has the ability and option to graduate with an associate's arts. You're already doing it. You are already there. Georgia Perimeter is already there with dual enrollment. Decap Tech or Georgia Piedmont is already there. To be candid with you, we think that we missed information. And we think we figured it out where and how in the stakeholders meeting. But I want you to know, the reason I even showed it to you is to say, this was their number one recommendation. And going back to what I said about being ahead of the curve, how long have we been working on this? Years, right? Years. We're that far ahead of the curve. So, when he comes in, takes an assessment of our existing industry and the needs, we're there. So, anyway, I'm encouraged to say that we'll continue to develop that and nurture it. The second, again, we feel like we are there. Create career awareness and internships. Lot of discussion, and we'll talk a little bit with Shannon in terms of internships and what we're seeing in the Career Academy, what we're seeing with some of our businesses. Talking, having some initial conversation, very, very preliminary, about the possibility of using dorms at Oxford College to house summer interns. These are, these are great things, great opportunities for us, and we're going to keep chasing it. Again, number three, we're in process. Entrepreneurship. Again, K-12 and College and Career Academy. It's already being discussed. We're already down the road. We're also having a conversation with Georgia Perimeter about this as well. So, anyway, we find it interesting that so many of his recommendations, which were completely objective and somewhat independent of things that we already had going on, we're in process of, and we're not far from those things being exhibited. What I want to do here is highlight some of the local successes that are already happening. They're in the mix to give evidence to, we've already, the rubber's already hit the road in many ways for this. The WIM, you see the W-I-M acronym. One of the things, I'll tell you where this came from. You know that we've done, possibly you might or might not know, the chamber hosted two job fairs over the last three, four months at Decap Tech and had about 800 people show up. One of the things that came out of the second job fair, quite candidly, was we had an industry that we have great relationship with. This was a great email. It's going to sound negative, but it wasn't. But he sent an email and said, I need to be candid with y'all. I don't know that I'll participate in another job fair unless you will facilitate a pre-screening room that helps train people in understanding how to prepare their resume, how to dress for an interview, how to make eye contact, and sell themselves. This is a really, really big issue. We're working with all our staffing agencies. We're working with Department of Labor in these things so that our workforce that is available, that is out there, have the soft skills to be able to at least make a good first impression. So, the WIM acronym is Work Ready, Interview Ready, Nine-to-Five Ready. And Shannon's got this tiger by the tail and is doing a great job and collaborating with some great partners in that. The event that y'all had just the other night, the Aspiring Young Professionals, nails it. Nails it, nails it, nails it. A hundredfold. If we can multiply that and capture that, the problem is, those are high school seniors, and we're dealing with young men and women who are 25 to 35 years old, who don't know the things that those high school seniors know. And so, we're working through that in terms of our workforce development. Principal for the Day, I cannot tell you how, I cannot emphasize how significant that was. And here's one of the things that I want you to know about your chamber and how you can leverage us. When we walked out of that Principal of the Day, there were 23 conversations that happened that night at the dinner table. There were 23 conversations that happened the next day at the water cooler. There were 23 conversations that happened in executive boardrooms about their experience. There were people, as you know, some of y'all were able to hear the debriefing, there were people in there who had never, who don't have children, who had never been in school since they graduated or were in elementary school. And they were like, oh, my gosh. And one of the things, the conversations that was had from the business leaders mindset, and I want you to hear this with great pride, was that there are things that y'all are doing in the classroom that put business practices to shame. And the business community typically views the school system like a government entity. And in many ways, you obviously are, quasi in some ways, other ways, you are not. And that speaks volumes to our business leaders. That speaks volumes to our business community. Not that there's anything wrong with government, but from a business mindset, when they come in and they see the things that y'all are doing, the best practices, it is a game changer in the conversation. And you, and I've got goosebumps right now, literally, because I'm so encouraged by it. But when, the reason I get goosebumps is not kudos to you, but because it is a, it is, it changes the dialogue. And if there is a time in our system, in our economy, in this season of life that we all happen to live and lead in, is the concept of hope and changing the conversation is now. We need it. And what you just did in facilitating that, and all you did is open the doors. You didn't pay the janitorial staff anything extra to clean up. You didn't put the principals on notice that if they didn't perform, they're going to get in trouble. They just did their job, and everyone knew it, and it was impressive. Impressive. So, anyway, we've got to keep that going. We've got to leverage that because we, as the chamber, and you as the Board of Education, we have to change the dialogue. We've got to tell our story. It's a good story. Second, teachers as learners and leaders. We facilitated that with, in partnership with you guys. Great experience. Great experience in terms of teachers and business leaders being able to build those relationships, help each other, facilitate goals. Good stuff. And let me highlight this Workforce Development Summit in 2012. As I referenced, Shannon Davis has really got this tiger by the tail. What I want you to understand is, I believe, quite humbly, that there's only one person in Newton County that wakes up every morning and thinks about, how are we going to prepare 100,000 people, 100,000 residents to succeed in the marketplace? There's a lot of people that take a slice of the pie, but there's only one person that's thinking about 100 residents and figuring out how we get them employed, and that's Shannon. Literally, what happens, what we've seen, is that people come talk to Shannon and have for years, and they bring their issue, their point of concern, their position. And they're talking to us, but they're not talking to everybody. And so, we're changing that dialogue. Instead of us being the hub, we're going to become the wheel, and all the spokes are going to tie in, and the conversation's going to change. And the Workforce Development Summit is our first effort to do that. And that is going to be in March 28th, 2012. It's going to be at your facility, at the College and Career Academy. To our knowledge, nobody in the state is doing this. We very much feel like we're pioneers. Shannon's already getting phone calls from around the state, from people saying, how do y'all do this? So, she's faking it until she makes it, and in the meantime, we're really assessing our reality to put together a strategy and a plan, and your staff are partners with us in that. So, anyway, I appreciate that tremendously. Let me say this. In conclusion, this targeted industry study really kind of highlighted three areas for us. One is our per capita income, and this isn't on the slides. Candidly, I didn't want to bring it because I didn't want it to be the focus. It's our focus. It's not yours. The per capita income in Newton County is just right at $23,000. You see this in free and reduced lunch numbers. We see it when we try to recruit businesses and when we try to recruit retail commercial. Because those numbers, quite candidly, aren't enough, they're not high enough income to be able to recruit certain industry, certain retail. Let me rephrase that. The per capita income and the hourly wage is a number that we can recruit industry to. The problem is, it's not the industry that we want. And what I mean by that is, it's not the kind of industry that will create a significant value to the community. And boiled down to your world, that means tax dollars. And so, for instance, the company, this Vestar that just landed, that Roger recruited and brought in, average 140 jobs, average salary $20 an hour. Our average salary in Newton County is about $14.85. That's a significant difference. Two other companies that, one that's announced, one that's in the wings, average salary is about $15 an hour. You say, hey, that's our average. It is our average, but let me tell you what that does. And y'all know numbers. It pulls up the base and it creates quite a competition for industry. So, anyway, my point is, that was a big issue, is our per capita income is very low. And I say that to you because I want you to know, you're from, if you say, hey, what's a chamber do? As it pertains to this, I want you to know, we do many things, but as it pertains to economic development, we do one. And we recruit quality job creators. That's what we're about. And the reason we do it is because that tide and that per capita income, the average hourly wage, the household median income, those things will affect your budget. And we know it, we see it, and we're committed to that as it pertains to the whole county. So, that is a big issue. That's a big focus for us. You, just as we look to you to turn that battleship, we expect you to look to us to turn that. And we have great partners with y'all. You help us tell the story, and we are seeing the turn. The second thing that this study did, it really helped us realize we've got a workforce issue. The College and Career Academy was hands down one of the hugest assets that came out of this study. If you don't think we're not champions for that and raising the banner and waving the flag, I don't really like James Woodard, but I got to be his friend. Because he's so critical, and the College and Career Academy is so critical to what we're, what we're doing and what we're recruiting. And so, I want you to know that that's huge. And then lastly, I want you to know, we're shooting four silver bullets in those four areas that we're recruiting on, and that's what, that's what we're doing and that's what we're about. So, anyway, I'm going to stop talking and open it up for questions that you might have or things that I might have brought up. And I'll also quickly defer to Roger or Shannon if it's something specific to their field.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make one comment based on the presentation tonight. I attended the original presentation of this report here in Covington. Some of you sitting at the dais here did as well. When the report mentions the quality of K-12 education, what the presenter or consultant targeted, of course, was the SAT, if not ACT results for the school system, the college admissions scores. That is typically what incoming industry, business and industry looks at. They look very much at the college admission readiness of the school system. The point I want to make tonight is, not only to confirm that from my many years in the superintendency, that's what they look at, but secondly, to say with the new Georgia College and Career Readiness Index, the new proposed accountability system for the state of Georgia, that State Superintendent Barge says will know about its status by the end of this month, which I think the feds will approve it. It will highlight across Georgia the college readiness standing of the various public schools in addition to its career readiness as well through various measures. But increasingly, board members, as I've been saying for some time now, SAT, SAT, ACT dual enrollment, advanced placement will become a very important component of our report card going forward, like all other Georgia school systems.
Very true. And that is an issue that, Dr. Matthews is absolutely right. Industry does ask those questions. The problem, because oftentimes a question comes, well, how do you quantify that? You know, what do they say? What are their standards? What's a breakoff for coming to a community? The problem is, we don't know, oftentimes because we never know that we are even being looked at. They are site selection consultants that will, a company will hire this consultant to go, find me a community that our business can thrive in. And they'll look at those things from Greenville, South Carolina, and they'll check off, will be on a wall, and they'll say Covington, you know, yes. Decap, no. You know, and you'll never know. And so, when we get to have the conversations, we can articulate the message. But oftentimes, we don't get to have the conversation because we get eliminated early on. Yes, sir.
Is there any data that will implicate those top executives from major corporations that actually, instead of enrolling their kids in public school, enroll them in the private schools? Because I've read some articles where oftentimes, top executives like that, their children go to public school, I mean, private school. So, I'm wondering whether that may have an effect on our stats, private school versus public school.
As far as hard data, I don't know of any. Roger's shaking his head.
We definitely get that question though.
We do.
What private schools are available for our children?
And me asking that question, I'm just concerned as well, I question whether or not decisions are made, not because of public schools, but because there's no private schools for them.
That's absolutely true. And the chamber has supported, like for Peachtree Academy is a current one, current members of our chamber, but we were very active in trying to recruit them for that very reason. It's not so much a knock against the public school. It's an issue of alternative, a choice, and people having that. Which, which, let me rephrase. The theme school and even the Challenge Charter Academy are both great opportunities for us to sell that. And so, and we talk it. We really do. It's strong.
The reason I ask that because that can send some false perception out there that they speaking negative of the public schools.
Very true. We know that in our conversations with the executives here, that we've had those comments, and that's an issue. They, their kids are in private school in other counties, and they're really committed to it.
And my other question is, we've been doing dual enrollment and other things to advance the education of our students, give them a faster start for a number of years. Say, if they miss that, how much of this other, that is not true?
Fair. Roger, have you had any conversation with him about that, with Jay? Honestly, this is an issue that Dr. Tracoli at Georgia Perimeter, really, shocker, right? Brought to our attention. And we need to, we need to dig into that. Not so much for the findings as it pertains to the study, but as much more for our ability to articulate accuracy as we recruit. So, good point. Thank you for bringing it up.
And my thought is, maybe we're not doing a good job of selling or telling the story of dual enrollment. Maybe, you know, that's, that's a takeaway that it's not well-known in the community throughout his discovery process, that it wasn't discussed by the general public or the people who were in those rooms. So, maybe we need to do a better job. We collectively need to do a better job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Good insight. Any other questions?
Do you have other questions, any board members?
There's a comment. In looking at the results, especially in this suggesting area, I don't know, was there a time lag? It appears to be a couple of the categories, especially primary and secondary education, that we, they came down pretty hard on us, if you will. And the effort that's been put in over time, and the timeframe that he did the study didn't seem to jive. It was two or three that, we were on track, so to speak, our head of the curve, but yet it's still, the consultants didn't quite give us credit, from my perspective, as to what we should be doing. Was there a time lag? Or is this an old study, if you say?
No, I think, I think it simply had to do with where we were. If, if you would take ground level, so many of these things are sitting right below the surface. You know, College and Career Academy is under construction, but it wasn't there. The discussions... The discussions were being had, but even when he started the study, the classes hadn't started. The test scores, AYP had come back, but not all the data, in terms of where it really fleshed out. He's looking at back data, for sure, on that, and seeing the historical trends and making recommendations. But as you know, so many of those studies are present day back versus, you know, you can't assess the future numbers that you don't have. So, that's how our assessment is, when we saw these things start coming back in, we're like, this is actually good news. We're there, we're right on the cusp of this. And the truth is, just like we feel, as we've said, we feel like y'all are so ahead of the curve, but that it just takes so long to turn the ship, the same is true with our community. Keep in mind, we've had, we hadn't had an economic development industry recruitment in 14 years. 14 years, you know? And when that consultant came, Roger was courting probably 16 active projects, but none of them had announced. It was right under the surface, you know, it's, man, it's like a tulip bulb that's about to pop service, you know? We have confidence, I understand your point, we have confidence, from that study standpoint, that not only are we on the right track, that we've actually got good tracks in, in our efforts, in our energies. And that's true with this body included.
I have one other question. How far back did this survey date back to?
The historical data, I'd have to pull it.
That you presented tonight?
This was September 28th, 2011.
Of last year?
No, no, no.
This year.
This year, okay.
He was here this summer.
He's probably been married.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Listen, I want you to notice, as I introduce the time, that this was warts and all, there are some things that, you know, we have to talk about, but I want you, without any question, please know that you have the huge supporters in your chamber of commerce. If there's anything that y'all come across in your partners' education, if there's anything that you see that we can do to help you, we stand ready to do it. We deal, or we receive the byproduct of our school system, and we are committed to helping in any way possible. It is our future, we know that, you say it all the time. But I'm saying it is the future of our workforce, it's the future of our economic success and our job creator for all the years to come. So, thank you for what you do, endless work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Operations report, item D, Dr. Carpenter. Thank y'all, Mr. Hunter, for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, board members, we'll begin with our financial report. In reviewing the general fund financial reporting in November 30 of 2011, you'll note that we've completed five months of our fiscal year. Thus, we've completed 41.67% of our current year. And looking at expenditures, we have 42.84% expended, and that's about 1.17% more than the percentage of the year complete. With that being said, we're right on in terms of managing this tight budget. We're looking at each function in terms of expenditures, and our employees have done a good job during the first semester of toeing the line. So, we want to thank all of our leaders at the building level and all of our department leaders for their work in this area. They're toeing the line, but at the same time, they're ensuring a high-quality academic program at each school site, and we appreciate it. Finally, this is just the standard report, but I do want to remind the board that we'll have bond representative, Mr. Bryce Holken, with us on tomorrow, as we look at planning for the future in terms of our geo-bond sales, the potential for another SPOLOX referendum, and how this will impact debt service and pending projects in the school system going forward. Any questions about our financial report?
Any questions for the board members? Having to move on, now, Dr. Carpenter.
Okay, we look at our operations report, business and finance, item one, the Newton County School System's October SPOLOX III distribution is $826,832, and that's a decrease of about $6,800 from our September collection. Total SPOLOX III revenues for the first 22 months is $18,573,284, and that's averaging right at $844,240 per month. If we compare that to SPOLOX II, we're a little bit higher, as that SPOLOX had averaged $830,490 over the course of its 60 months of collection. Also, you may be reading the paper this Sunday, and you'll note that you'll see our SPOLOX III expenditures, that'll be printed in the newspaper, and that's a new requirement. I think this is our second year, Ms. Bullock, second year having to produce that information in the local organ, and you'll see that in the Covington News on Sunday, December 18. Just want to bring your attention to a couple of items. If you look at student transportation, we've been doing a lot of work with our drivers in small group and talking with them about various pieces related to driver training and safety, and that's going well. The training provides a review of all relative policies and best practices, and it's part of an ongoing effort to ensure students safe, ensure that our students are transported safely on our buses. And also, we found that in the smaller groups, bus drivers are giving us more dialogue about what they see that what works and what does not work. So, it takes us a little more time, but we are, we're doing that, and we're getting more from our drivers in terms of what's working on our roads. Procurement Department, you'll see that furniture's being delivered for our Career Academy, and it's arriving, and some of it will begin installation toward the end of the month of December. We're storing some at our service center, and we've secured an area at the Career Academy in the basement area as well, but we do have those furniture deliveries coming in at our Career Academy. Finally, if you look at nutrition, Meal Pay Plus, I'm glad they're changing their name, as I'll note in a second, it's been a tongue-tiring name for about three years now. But Meal Pay Plus, year-to-date revenues, November 2011, are $268,008, and that's $42,413.94 more than the same period in 2010, or an increase of about 18.8%. But Meal Pay Plus, and this is my last time saying it, has announced a name change. And that new name is My Payments Plus. I don't know if it's much better, but it's My Payments Plus, and it reflects more so the variety of services that they offer in terms of online payments, not only meals, but just various payments that the company offers. So, they do have a new logo, we provided that to our PR department, and that'll be posted on our website, and we'll give parents the material they need to know that this is just a name change. Nothing changes about what they do in terms of using the system. Any questions about our financial operations reports?
Any questions for the board members?
One item to add to our operations report tonight, which could have implications for our financial reporting, is we have Mr. Truman, or Dr. Truman Atkins here with us from Energy Ed. Dr. Atkins and I have been talking for the last three years about Energy Ed, and I know some superintendents around the state who make use of this program, but when he came over to talk with me about the program and the potential for savings, it was just not a good time, because they had a process in place in which we would have to encumber some upfront costs to utilize the program in our school system. So, now the company has reworked their model, given the issues that school systems are dealing with from a financial standpoint, and they've eliminated the upfront cost model, and they've looked at the savings generated, more so to pay their cost, and Dr. Atkins can go into greater detail. But we at least want the board to take this opportunity in December to look at Energy Ed, what it might offer our school system in terms of savings in the area of energy. We provided some notebooks, that's a customized proposal for us here in Newton, and I hope you had an opportunity maybe to look at those. But he's here to discuss it, and we are just here for that purpose, discussion. As we get through the discussion phase, and we may want to look at this and say, what are your questions? What do you want me to bring back to Dr. Atkins, take a closer look at? But the bottom line is, we do a lot in terms of looking for savings in the area of energy. But that's myself, Ms. Loomans, Mr. Smith, and we do it along with lots of other duties and responsibilities. We don't bring the expertise in the energy savings that a group like Energy Ed can bring to the table. They have engineers, they have those individuals that are highly trained in this area. They also provide us with an individual who would work with us full-time in that area. I hope I'm not stealing too much thunder, but is fully devoted to this type of a program and its work. And as you look at the proposal, and I'm sure that information's coming before you tonight, there's the opportunity for some large savings in our operational area. And as we look at what may be on the horizon in terms of budget and some of the things that may be forthcoming from the legislature, in addition to cuts that we've already experienced, I think it's time that we look at Energy Ed a little closer as another one of those opportunities and operations to affect the savings. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Atkins.
Chairman Turner, members of the board, Dr. Matthews and staff that's here this evening, I appreciate the opportunity of being with you this evening and sharing with you the energy education story. But first and foremost, I appreciate the opportunity of coming back to my once-home here in Newton County, having lived here for 10 years in 1980 to 1990, as the principal of Newton County High School at that time. In fact, I served as the high school principal for 21 years, and half of that time was almost here in Newton County. But I was able to also experience the last eight and a half years of my career as superintendent of schools, retired in December 2001, and since that time, I have been working directly with the energy education across this country. I served not just Georgia, but Tennessee, Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana. Having hired this company myself back in the 1990s, and also at a time when Newton County had the program once upon a time, back in the late mid-'90s, I believe it was, this program has been very, very successful over the years, working with, working with many, many school districts across the country. Now, I have this little gadget here, he trained me earlier to operate this, hopefully I haven't forgotten what I'm supposed to do. But energy education and Newton County schools, if we were to enter into a partnership, we believe very strongly that we will be able to reduce your consumption between 20 and 30%. Now, I will have to say also, going along with Dr. Carpenter, is that you have done an excellent job here in many, many areas. The focus is on doing everything possible to save energy. But we do believe very strongly that we have the team of experts, specialists, that can come and work with your organization and even enhance the savings opportunities, identify those opportunities, and save tremendous money. There are basically three ways in which you can save dollars. And Dr. Dennis Bovington, who is a professional engineer, certified energy manager out of Penn State University, basically says, think of energy as our, coming up with ways to save energy, like you're building a pyramid. You don't start at the peak, you start at the bottom, and energy conservation, according to him and his studies, is the base that you're going to be starting from. Energy conservation is largely based on behavioral practices to use in a more efficient, more efficient manner. And then, on that base, you're able to build other tiers which would be considered beneficial and energy savings, such as energy efficiency, energy demand, and renewable energy, and so forth. Dr. Wayne Turner, who is the, actually author of Energy Management Handbook, he's written many, many books on the subject, he's actually considered the guru of any energy management and conservation, basically says that organizations can save as much as 50% of their actual usage if you look at all three ways. If you look at negotiating better rates, you have a chance to maybe 5% or 7%. If you look at installing more efficient equipment, which you have done over the years, especially with all your construction, the retrofitting projects that you've had underway for a number of years, you've done a great deal of that. So, you can typically, on average, 12% to 14% savings there. If you look at negotiating better pricing, then there's a chance of 5% to 7%, overall possibility of 50% or more from these complementary approaches. When you compare the two areas in which you're going to receive your largest areas of savings, mechanical solutions and energy education solutions, basically what you're looking at is two different ways to save dollars, and they're complementary to each other. One does not overlap the other one. With mechanical solutions, you're required to purchase equipment, you have some equipment changes that you'll have to purchase, and that there's going to be some large upfront costs, and the payback is going to be for several years. When you look at the energy education solutions, there is no equipment you have to purchase, there are no upfront costs, and you have immediate payback with our program. Energy Education has been involved now for 25 years. We've partnered with organizations across this country, and we've worked with more than 1,200 clients in 48 states across America. In the process, in the process, our clients have saved better than $2.5 billion focusing in on energy conservation through changing organizational behavior. This allows you to take those resources that are saved, redirect those, cover teaching positions, or to invest in additional equipment, or whatever the needs may be within the organization. And this happens simply because of the strong partnership that would exist between Energy Education and Newton County Schools. We bring to the table our, more than 40 experts and specialists that focus on energy conservation and energy management, we have more than 400 years of combined experience, and we've implemented the program in more than 20,000 facilities across the country. And because of that experience, because of the background and expertise of our people, we've identified more than 1,200 areas of evaluation. So, when we come into your district, we will actually look for those areas, and we're going to make sure that no stones are left unturned. That's not to say that all 1,200 areas would be found, because you've done some good things. There's some things here that a lot of other school districts have not done. But with what we bring, we will be able to identify any of those that you have not been able to identify and implement, and we would put into a process, put a process in place where they would be, come reality. So, you can invest those dollars in areas that they need. The funding for this program comes out of your existing utility budget, so there's no additional dollars that you have to come up with in order to fund the program. We will reduce your consumption, as a result, you're sending less dollars to the utility providers, and those dollars will be sufficient to cover for the cost of the program. This is the map, energy map, across the country, and some of those dots are overlapping, as you easily can see, when we're looking at more than 1,200 clients across the country. You'll see that we have a large number of clients in the state of Georgia, most of our clients are in the eastern part of the United States, because that's where the population centers primarily are and the larger districts are located. This sort of shows what happens over a period of time, when we look at the $2.5 billion that we have saved, as you see, that as you continue from the left to the right, from one year to the next, then that, those amounts increase tremendously. And of course, they keep compounding because of the fact that we have many, many of our clients that stay with the program for years and years, for more than 20 or more years, of course, since we've been involved with the program for 25 years. During this period of time, we have been recognized by the U.S. Department of Energy, Environmental Protection Agency, as one of the leading energy companies in the country. We received in 2009 and 2010 the Energy Star Award for, and we were the partner of the year. And in 2011, we received the Energy Star Award for Sustained Excellence. And that's due to the fact that we, because of a comprehensive approach to energy conservation and management, we are able to essentially excel all other companies that do equipment and so forth, because they're more focused on one or two things. If you look on the Energy Star website, if you look at all the buildings that have been labeled as Energy Star Buildings, you'll find of the thousands of companies out there, that we have almost 50% of those buildings listed. If you look at the actual Energy Star leaders, and as we're talking about districts, organizations that are recognizing, have exceeded 20% to 30% savings, then we're talking about better than 50% of those leaders are our clients. I might also mention the fact that other awards are given, Heinz Community College, one of our clients, received just recently the National Association of College Universities Business Officials Award, and then University of Oklahoma State, the grand finalist for the SAKUBA Award, which is similarly accepted, so the Southern Association Award. How energy education can help your organization, we believe that during the first six months, during that period of time, you would not be paying us anything, you would not be sharing in any of the savings. This allows us to get the program up and running, and we believe that during that time, based on our feasibility study, that we will be able to save you better than $143,000 in net savings for the school district. Over the next 10 years, you will be able to redirect those dollars, and we believe, conservatively, those dollars will be better than $7.3 million. conservatively, those dollars will be better than $7.3 million during that timeframe. Here again, partnering with Energy Education, there's no capital outlay that's required. You keep the score. This program is different from any other program that you will find, and that is the energy specialist that would be hired to be the point man for the program in the district, would be the person, this is the person who actually comes from your employee pool, someone that will be in the process of helping select, but that person's going to be entering all the data into the software that's going to determine, going to show what the savings are and how the savings were generated. I also would like to say to you that we guarantee your investment is coming from your utility budget, and it's dollars that you're already currently spending, but we also guarantee that you're not going to be spending any dollars more than what you would be spending otherwise. We're also going to support your mission in comfort and safety. That will come first. We're not here to ask our teachers or students to be hot in the summertime, cold in the wintertime. We're going to make sure that we support the vision, the mission that you have so that all the teachers and all the employees within the district will be able to be successful in their roles. This is a limited investment, but perpetual savings, and that is that if after the fee payment period or the time when you'll be sharing your savings with us, when that is completed, we will continue to support the program in perpetuity as long as you maintain the program and as long as you have the Energy Education specialists in place. Even after the fifth year, whatever that may be, if that person were to retire or to leave the district and go somewhere else, then we will come back in, help you make the selection, train that person with no additional cost. So this allows you to sustain the program for years and years to come. The first thing we do when we come into your organization is we're going to be looking very carefully at all the opportunities that exist. This looks like a sort of classic campus environment. We're going to be looking at every cubit area, and all areas and every cubit feet within your organization in terms of energy usage and how people are engaged in the process of reducing consumption. Because we leave no stone, every opportunity, whether it's a nickel opportunity or dime opportunity or even more, we'll be able to identify it, and we'll be able to have a process or solution in place that will be able to capture it through the engagement of all the employees within your organization. The second thing we do, and let me say also about the recommendations, we come up with a lot of recommendations, of course, more than you will find anywhere else. You won't be able to find them from talking to your utility provider or from going on the internet. Because of the experience we've had, we've identified things that people just don't think about. We'll say this, a longer list of recommendations is not the solution, of course, no more than a longer list of exercises will work for me in terms of losing weight. But it's a process, it's a regimen that you enter into that makes this program successful. So we bring to you a powerful, proven process that will consistently turn these recommendations into real savings. And this process actually involves four critical components, four critical areas. Before going into that, I would like to show you a little bit about the background of our staff. Basically, when you're changing the energy conservation culture, it is the merging of the technical expertise as well as organizational behavior expertise. Dr. Carpenter mentioned a moment ago the areas of expertise we bring to the table that would help build on the areas that you already have. And we're looking at expertise in HVAC, indoor air quality, building simulation, M&amp;V specialization, Six Sigma process experts, pneumatics and control system, and so forth, recommissioning as well as retrocommissioning. Look at the certification of our employees, of our staff. We're looking at professional engineers, certified energy managers, certified M&amp;V professionals, people certified as engineers, air quality auditors, and so forth. In other words, any and all aspects of energy conservation that allow us to identify those opportunities and be able to successfully implement solutions where that you'll be able to generate the savings, that's what we bring to the table. But at the same time, the expertise is there, it also involves the organizational behavior expertise as we relate to all employees within the organization. Whether you're talking about individuals, or whether you're talking about groups, or whether you're talking about the organization as a whole, culture change does not happen overnight, behavioral change does not take place in a day or a week, it takes place over a period of time. Where you're focusing on your execution and accountability and also using evidence-based decisions and making decisions and making analysis about what you can do. So the application of the principles of behavior modification and the use of these principles, which are derived from the total quality management concept, are part of the process that we bring to the table. And so by merging the two together, we will be able to develop the energy conservation culture that I believe that you would like to see and the one that will maximize your savings for years and years to come. The next thing is the assessment and planning process. When we come on your campuses, you would expect auditing, any 20 to 25 audits per week, and the audits will be taking place during five specific time periods of the day, before school gets underway in the mornings, during the day, and after school in the afternoon when people leave the campuses to go home, and also before and after school sponsored activities. These observations allow us to document fully all the opportunities that exist. We're going to be evaluating your facility needs, your architecture patterns, your system configurations and so forth, and that documentation and putting in a very extensive action plan allows for day-to-day focus and day-to-day implementation of a sound process. The second thing we do is the effective communication, coordination and communication with all of your employees. If you're going to be able to change the energy behavior or energy culture, then there has to be effective communication taking place. And we will do some of the same things that you typically do on a regular basis, is that there will be information provided in written form and digital form and small group meetings occasionally. But we found that the most effective way to change people's way of looking at things, and that is one-on-one, face-to-face communication. Everyone in your organization uses energy, and because of that, everyone is involved in making decisions about how energy is used and when it's used, and they must be a part of the solution. We do not require any more work for the employees, we just simply ask them to do some things differently from the way they've done before, and as a result, here again, still providing the needs for energy in the area in which they're working, but also ensuring that energy that's not needed is eliminated. The third component is providing that daily leadership and focus for the organization. And as Dr. Carpenter mentioned a moment ago, we will work with Dr. Matthews, Dr. Carpenter and your staff in selecting an energy education specialist. We do not go outside of the organization, we work within the organization, identifying someone who has specific characteristics, specific skills. We're not looking for someone who necessarily has all the expertise in the technical side, but we are looking at someone who has the ability to communicate effectively with others, has good people skills, good work ethic, good educator, good mentor, good motivator, someone who can convey the mission of the district in a way that your people would be interested in making some adjustments to the things that they're doing to in order to save the energy. This particular person, we're looking for someone who has great respect on the part of other employees within the district, someone who has a strong work ethic, someone who's been successful in whatever role he or she may have been in the past. The process for selecting this individual is done as a result of communicating this role, communicating this position to all of your employees, and it could be also some people interested out there that are retirees that would be interested in the position. But we provide a job information session during the application period, where one of our vice presidents would come into the organization and present a presentation and also answer questions to anyone who may be interested in being hired for the position. Also, this same individual will come in on the day the interviews take place, will sit at the table with Dr. Matthews or whoever he selects to be on the team in making that decision. It is a joint decision because we know the characteristics of the person we look for, but we don't know their background, we don't know their history, and you know that. And so basically, the purpose is to find the best person possible for this position. The training will be taking place primarily here on site, out in the buildings, working directly, out in the schools, better than 90 percent of the training will occur there. We do have three national conferences a year that we ask the energy specialists to attend. This gives an opportunity to connect with all energy specialists across the country. Typically, those conferences occur in the middle part of the country or somewhere on the eastern side because that's where most of our clients are located. The last component, and that is measuring the program and making sure that the savings that's generated are indeed savings. As I mentioned before, the energy specialists will be the one to input all the data into the software, or she will be the one who will generate the reports reflecting how successful the program is. The software package that's used is simply the one that's considered the best on the market called Energy Cap Pro. It is a software package not used just by our clients, but also by organizations across the country. Even the state of Georgia uses the software package to keep track of government buildings and so forth. It's used by Smithsonian Institute, it's even used by one of the departments of the Department of Energy. So the software is based on your energy standards for measuring savings, and as I said, data comes directly from your utility bills, from the documents that you have within the district. Your energy specialists will enter that data into the software, and the software is capable of comparing apples to apples. What that means is that we're going to compare what this program is able to bring to the district against a 12-month period of time prior to the implementation of the program, so you'll have a 12-month base year, and that base year is going to reflect what your expenditures were on a meter-by-meter basis and also what the cost per unit was and so forth. We cannot take blame or take credit for things which we have no control over. Weather conditions is one. We cannot take credit for you experiencing milder weather conditions compared to the base year, and the software package was not allowed to do this. There would be savings. You might have $100,000 in savings, $80,000 may be as a result of our program, another $20,000 could be because of the weather was nicer during the next season. The same is also true with pricing. If your utility provider were to drop your price by, say, for example, a penny per kilowatt hour, then you would expect to save money, but that's not money we'll be saving for you as a result of getting it at a cheaper price. Here again, price negotiation. However, if the utility provider says you now have to pay us another penny more, then you will have to pay that per kilowatt hour, we can't take the blame for that. Only credit we can take is that reduction in consumption and the reduction in consumption or the number of units we reduce your consumption by would be applied against the actual market rate at that given time. So adjustments are made to account for non-program variances, and basically what you do is that the adjustment is made to the base year, essentially says if during the base year this situation happened to exist, lower pricing or better weather, then what would you have spent during that period of time versus what you did spend? And so that is actually removed from the equation. And reports will show reduced consumption and savings from behavioral practices. I would like to hand out a couple of things here. I'm going to show you what I'm talking about because it is very detailed. I'm going to put, starting this side, if you want to pass them down.
Are these different?
Pardon? They're all different. Just take one of each, take one of each and pass the rest of them down. Take one of these documents that's stapled and pass the rest of them down. We're not going to spend, we're not going to spend just a minute to looking at these documents, I just wanted to give some idea of the type of reports that are generated with this. I will mention the one that you have there in front of me is Troup County, Georgia. Troup County is similar to you in the fact that they had the program back in the mid-'90s and had a very successful program, but at the several years, actually several years after they completed the contract, the energy specialists retired, and they said, "Well, we know what we're supposed to do, so we won't have to replace them, we should be able to continue on with the program." What you have, it needs to come all the way down to the end, go to the one end to the other. What you have on each end would be passed down to the other members as well. But this past year, a year ago, a little year ago, Troup County came back into the program, and this will give you an idea of the opportunities that they exist. And they also had building programs where they did a great deal of retrofitting as well, but yet we were able to go in and save them significant dollars. What you'll find here, each of the pages that you see in front of you here represents one performance year, and at the bottom of each page, you'll see the actual percentage of cost of orders. In other words, what we reduced our cost by based on reduction in consumption, and then you have the total figure there at the bottom for that particular year. The second page in this case is less than one year, only three months, and then on the very last page, the very last page, you will find actual spread, a summary that reflects not only your actual cost savings, but also the difference in the energy usage on a utility type basis. And you also see in Troup County the listing of all the schools in the district there, and it shows the effect that each program had on each school in terms of energy conservation and energy savings. So for them, during the 15 months in the program, they actually reduced their energy costs by better than $800,000. You've got a document there for Hall County. Hall County's been in the program now for about 14, 15 years, has an outstanding program, and during that period of time, they have saved better than $15 million in energy cost. And they're a good example of when an energy specialist left the district and we went back in and helped them select a replacement and do the training for that individual, so they were able to continue to sustain the program. Carroll County Schools, another example of school districts, been in the program now for about three years, done extremely well. The data on this particular document is a little behind, and actually they saved better than $4 million in four years into the program. What I want to show you here are some top Georgia clients that you see in front of you here. You have over to the left-hand side, the top client in the state is Scraven County Schools. They have a 40 percent program. Elbert County, 38 percent program, they've been involved with the program for 145 months. You have Stevens County, 152 months, Carroll County, 35 months, Coffee County, Lee County, Georgia, 48 months. Of course, you have Hall County and Meriwether, Cook County, Fannin County. And in your book, you also have other districts in Georgia that have been identified. These are some of the top southern clients in our region, and here again, many of them have been involved for many, many years. Pascagoula, Mississippi, for an example, has been involved with the program for 172 months. You have large clients, K-12 clients, St. John's County in Florida, have been involved with the program for 31 months. You've saved them better than $11 million during that period of time. Of course, they're a large district, done extremely well. Polk County, Florida, for an example, has been in the program for 192 months. Their cost savings has been better than $59 million. You look at Loudon County, Virginia, Dr. Ed Hatrick, who is the current president of the WSA here in the nation, was the one who hired us back many, many years ago, 214 months ago, they've saved better than $40 million. Here again, you look at districts that have 100 percent EMS control systems in place, similar to what you have. There are still significant opportunities for savings, and we've been able to go in and capture those. The results for your school district is that we will be able to assist you in doing the good things for the environment by reducing the amount of greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, as equivalent to taking cars off the road or planting trees, and you had some information in your proposal that we... And you had some information in your proposal that we, the materials that you received that has a matrix that shows the impact that you would have on the environment if you were to enter into a partnership with us. Also, the savings here allows you to preserve your programs that you have, keep teachers in their positions, or just simply use the money where it's needed the most. We believe that conservatively, you will save better than, you will save $7,305,249 over the next 10 years, and this is net savings after expenditures and shared savings. I'm going to stop at that point in case there's any questions you may have. I hope I wasn't too redundant. Most everything that I shared with you just now, you will find in the down proposal book that was submitted to you.